I'll let you know for future use if you need someone. Well, why would you know though? Yeah, they keep themselves kind of a... We have some interaction, not a lot, but some. Do they do? I think they're gonna go to Afton. I don't think there are some in private school from what it sounds. No, she stays home. I don't know, it could be maybe a month ahead, two months, it could actually be moving out. By the time this whole process goes through.
All right, we've got students from across the district that are being recognized and so we have our principals here from each of our schools, so I might ask that they come up and they're gonna say a few words about each of the students from their particular school that are being recognized. So I'll let Dr. Bean start at main year and then we can just go on down the line. So if you want to come over here and then just tell us a little bit about each student, that'd be great.
All right, good evening. We have three students to be recognized as Afton Strong students from main year. The first is Colin Edwards. Colin is in first grade. Colin looks out for others around him. When a student was sad because she lost her special hat, Colin not only volunteered to help her find it, he also comforted the student and told her it was okay and she didn't need to worry. Colin is kind to others around him. Congratulations, Colin. Our second nomination is Zane Jones Berry, a second grader. It is never easy to start out at a brand-new school after a move in pandemic learning, but Zane has adapted so flawlessly and has truly shown what resiliency looks like. He comes to class with a smile on his face every single morning and is constantly demonstrating his care for others and ability to lead. I always see his hand raised, ready to participate, and when given the opportunity to work with peers, Zane lifts his classmates by sharing his strategies with positive affirmations. He is such a wonderful piece of our second-grade classroom family. The teacher says she's so lucky to have him in her classroom. Congratulations, Zane. And our last nominee is Alex Kepke, also a second grader. Alex is such a sweet, respectful student. He comes to school ready to learn each and every day. Even though our school year is just beginning, Alex is already such a strong role model for others in the classroom. He works hard in all subject areas and puts forth his best effort always. He's respectful, honest, and responsible, as well as friendly to everyone on the playground. He's off to such a strong start. Keep up the great work, Alex.
All right, thanks, Dr. Bean. How about a round of applause for main year Afton Strong students? And then we'll have Dr. Powers tell us about Gach Afton Strong students.
Hi, everybody. We have one student from Gach to recognize tonight. It's fifth grader Guadalupe Aguilar Mendez, and she was nominated by her teacher, Ms. Hoagland. Lupita is a shining star in our classroom. She is a conscientious, hard worker. She turns in assignments on time and is continually on task. Lupita recently graduated from ELL class. We are so proud of the progress she has made. Lupita is kind to others, willing to help when a student is in need. Her smile spreads joy to everyone she meets.
All right, and round of applause for Gach. And we have Dr. Butt to talk with us about Rogers Afton Strong students.
So for Rogers Middle School, our Afton Strong student nomination is for sixth grader Josie Foster, nominated by her choir teacher, Mr. Fernley. His nomination indicates that her enthusiasm is so strong that it nominates or that it motivates the students around her. In talking to her team of teachers, they also noted that Josie is quite a leader in the classroom and always the first one willing to step up and help anyone in need. So congratulations to Josie.
Then we'll have Dr. Myers tell us about Afton High School Afton Strong students.
Okay, we'll start with Ellis Blanc, nominated by Ms. Stewart. Ellis is a ninth-grade student who comes to school each day excited to learn. He has an extremely positive attitude and is always kind to everyone he meets. He's a joy to work with, and we hope his excellent attitude will help others find positivity as well. Xavier Boykin is also a ninth-grade student. Xavier stands outside my classroom door each morning waving to his peers as they arrive to school on the way to their parking spot. Xavier is very conscious of the speed that drivers enter the lot with and reported this to the SRO, who now parks his car outside as an additional safety support, as Xavier waves at cars and greets them, knowing that they are all safe. Congratulations, Xavier. We also have Kobe Burney. Kobe had a rough school year last year, like a lot of kids, due to COVID. He has started off so strong and is back to working at his full potential this school year. We couldn't be more proud of the huge turnaround and motivation he has shown. He's a great guy and fun to have in class. Isaac Hudson. Isaac is patient, caring, understanding, and a good friend and classmate. Isaac helps students at his chemistry table daily understand the concepts and in keeping up with the course. He also does the same in his study skills class where he helps a freshman with his Algebra I assignment. Isaac never makes students feel embarrassed because they need additional support. He just willingly does it because he has a very kind heart. Willem McCourt, 12th grade. Willem has gone above and beyond to be a friend and support to another team member on the swim team. Willem is kind, patient, supportive, and encouraging of this teammate, who was very anxious about participating in the sport. Willem even stands at the lane and encourages his teammate during a race. He's an outstanding young man. We have Madison Peruca, 12th grade. Over the summer, Madison Peruca competed in an event called Medical Assisting. She placed first in the state of Missouri. Madison recently took another test and scored high enough to move on to round two in her event. Only 20 out of about 150 people scored high enough to participate in round two, and Madison was one of those people. Madison is truly Afton Strong. And finally, we have Jacob Walterman. Jacob is a senior member of the AHS yearbook staff. He has been steady and reliable member in this in the past, but this year he has demonstrated significant care and compassion in mentoring the younger yearbook students. While at a football game, Jacob takes action pictures of the game, but he always takes the time to mentor, help, and coach up the new yearbook personnel. He looks at their photos, compliments their work, teaches them about camera skills, and in general makes them feel welcome and important in the process. Jacob exemplifies excellence, integrity, and the strong relationships that make AHS the remarkable place that it is. Congratulations to the high school students.
All right, wonderful to have our principals here. Okay, we want to see that the work that's turned consent agenda. Administration recommends, and I still move the board to approve the consent agenda. Do you have any second?
Second.
Tonight that includes minutes from September 21st, all three of our meetings that night, including the hearing and Board virtual, and then the MSBA, all of the full maintenance agreement for 2021, and dispersals. Does anyone have any questions or anything that needs to be moved someplace else from here? Okay, all those are greater. Any questions?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? I'm comparing six to zero. Moving on to section five reports, and then we'll start with Dr. Butt.
All right, thank you. I know we've got a lot of things to get to, so I kind of tried to keep it somewhat brief in the superintendent report, kind of building upon, I guess you heard about our Afton Strong students. And so some information that I integrated into the report is just how those students are recognized or how we ask our staff to think about thinking of students to recognize. And I want to make sure everyone had information on, you know, if they come across a student that needs to be nominated for whatever reason, you've got the link so that, you know, so that we can make sure we're recognizing our students for exhibiting our core values. So I put that in there. One thing that we didn't speak to yet is our staff recognition. So on a monthly basis, we try to also provide ways for staff to get recognized. And so this is something that's been going on. This is not new this year. But I wanted to, to this year, kind of integrate those recognitions into the superintendent report. And so what I posted there are our staff members that were recognized for August. So I'll read those names to you. So our August staff members that received Cougar compliments are Anna Levinson, Angela Beerman, Lynn Hennessy, Laura Montgomery, and Tiffany Shelton. So congratulations to those staff members for someone feeling like they deserve that recognition. One of their peers felt like they deserved that. And then we're also pausing to recognize for September, staff members. And so those staff members from September that received a Cougar compliment were Amanda Lumen, Mary Beth Merlot, Tina TL Reed, Abby Ricks, Emma Tillman, Tori Tuma, and Kristy Wilson. So please join me in congratulating our staff members for receiving a Cougar compliment. And then once again, I wanted to make sure everyone knew that really anybody's eligible to nominate a staff member. So if you come across a staff member that you feel is going above and beyond, I would encourage you to use that link and then let us know about those staff members that are doing really good work. And like I said, this is just one, one small thing we can do to make sure people realize that their efforts are noticed, you know. And we know that there are things going on daily, but it's, it never hurts for people to, to hear that whenever you think it's appropriate. So just wanted to make sure everyone, everyone kind of had that information and knew that while that, these recognition programs aren't new, we really do hope to keep them going and we really do encourage participation. So with that, that's all I wanted to draw attention to for the superintendent report, but also happy to answer any questions or anything that you might have if it pertains to this or anything else we could do that.
I love the idea of including that.
Yeah. Absolutely, happy to do it.
All right, and we want 5.02. So this is our book study conversation, so as a board, we challenge ourselves to learn every day all the time. It's part of Missouri's primary quest, but also something that we enjoy. And this year, we decided to start off our group learning with a book called Governance Core. And we've been making that a bridge, and two administrators are doing that for us as well. And so tonight Bridget will be leading us, and just a brief conversation to touch base on some thoughts about the second chapter of this book.
First on page 29.
Trust me, governance mindset. Bridget, get us started here.
Yeah, this chapter covers four components of governance mindset. Systems thinking, strategic focus, deep learning, and manner. And it's developing the mindset first often required of shift in thinking. We call the shift moving from I to we. So I had some questions. I sent out to you guys the email. The first one was, what does having a governance mindset means? It was on page 31. Which one means the most to you and what is one that you feel we could work on and do better? I'm thinking about when I first started the board, like I was like, oh, I'm gonna go for the children. It was all about the kids. It was all about the teachers. But then I learned there's just so much more than just those two. The budget, the organizations, the committees. So I really felt like we, I think we do a good job with all of these, but there's always something we can do better. So I don't know your thoughts.
I think, not that it's not being done, but supporting the staff is of the utmost importance. I mean, without doing that, you're nibbling the kids, so, you know, it's one thing that comes to my mind.
And I look at it as creating a positive organizational culture. It's easy for us to sort of take out of our mindset, we hold some responsibility for that, that we certainly set up comfortably.
So the one that resonated with me was the building and maintaining a strong governance infrastructure. And because we're reading this book, but also because it's, it's, in some ways, it's so fragile, especially because we have turnover on the board every couple of years and bringing new people on. And so we really have to continue to make sure that we are very intentional about the way that we bring people on and help them to get activated and understand their role. Because sometimes people come onto boards, not this one obviously, because we've got amazing boards. Sometimes people come on the boards for their own personal interests. And so I think we've done over the last couple of years a really good job about having those events prior to board members being elected, where they really have an opportunity with Dr. Rock and with other board members to understand that one. And I think that we can strengthen that. So I think we're doing it well, and I think that we all need to continue to keep that up.
Good. So I guess my next one is, quote, "The only way you can gain both a clear view of reality and some perspective on the bigger picture is by distancing yourself from the fray." That was on page 37. What is a way we can gain perspective in our governance work? How do you look at?
Well, when I was reading that, I was thinking about a little bit, I did a viewing from the balcony. And when we talk about topics, it's good for us to think, and this is part of even going back to the last one, and bridging to the community, having some empathy and understanding what is going on in various kids' lives around that decision that we might be making. That it's not, you know, all families are not the same. And so there's a spectrum there, and just having some empathy and a broader perspective beyond just our experience. Maybe the experience of our circle of friends, the broader community, and what they might be dealing with. Whether you're everything, you know, from homeless to kids that are mostly left at home while their parents have to work multiple jobs to make things go. There's a, there's a pretty broad spectrum of experiences, and if we can keep that, we can, we can make better decisions.
I think even on the word of the fray, like I have almost a visceral reaction to that right now. It feels like everything is a fray in the world right now. Like it's so hard to get out of the fray.
And you're afraid.
And afraid, crying at least. But again, going back to the previous list, I think that focusing on the long-term goals of the organization, that's one of the things that the board, working with Dr. Rock, can really, that's how we can step out of the fray. And that's just part of the one time, I think, with everything going on in a season like this one. But it's, but it's so critical for us to take that long-term view. Because ultimately, that's what allows us to be successful down the road, not just, you know, we're working the water right now, but to really continue to be successful. And one of the ways I think we can take a long-term goal approach, even when there's a lot of fray, is to really think about a new beginning or structural moment. And we've talked about that as a group, and that's one of the things I hope this book will help us to do. Because just the day this stuff takes us so much of our time right now naturally, and just making sure that we're structuring our conversations, we're capitalizing our strategic conversations as well, is one of the ways to get better for us.
I agree. The kind of, is like, what is a goal we can set as a board to strategically focus upon our deep, with deep learning? You kind of said that, like, this is a goal, to read books, share it with others, and?
That, I mean, even just reading this book study feels a little bit like, oh, maybe we should get out of the fray and take, take the, 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 the.
Definitely.
One thing, Bridget, I was thinking when you asked that question, was what can we tangibly do as a group? And I just had an idea, and I'm not even, I'm not demanding it right through this, but after we finish the vision, mission, values effort, which we're kind of in the process on, I would appreciate being able to sit down and talk about the idea that they presented here of a moral interior and what we think that implies within acting. What, what does that even mean? How do we interpret that? What does that mean? What does that look like? And just get our response. I mean, I think that's a deeper discussion than the few minutes that we have here. But it, it would really help me to see where we have ground and pushing forward and shared ideas. Because that's a black box to me.
So that brings me to the last one. When reading over the manner on page 46 in the book, I think we're all pretty good at listening to each other and not talking over each other. But we need to remember that we're like a fishbowl, we're in a fishbowl, and everyone is watching. What is a way that you feel that we are perceived as a board? Like, do you feel? How do you, how do you feel perceived? Or how do we feel?
And, you know, if somebody is watching us, like actively listening and watching us interact, one of the things that jumped out to me when I read your question and I'm reading this section is, that I think we are very aware of our own personal, like, goals and not ambitions for ourselves, but for the school district, like just what we bring to this board. And I think sometimes we can, we can be very passionate about it and then recognize maybe that passion came off a little bit, not like I intended. And I think we all are aware of that. I think we acknowledge it ourselves. And I don't know, and sometimes that's an executive session, so maybe it's always, you know, out here at this meeting, but I do think that there's, you know, I just think there's an awareness, a self-awareness, and then just sort of a renewed awareness that we all are passionate and we have, you know, different, different things that will, that excite those passions. And, oh, I just, I just feel like we are aware of our own and each other's in a way that a lot of people, a lot of groups aren't always. And I think, you know, it's, it's easy to kind of let that go and just run up in as an individual and then everyone, and everyone else is just sort of, you know, kind of force of that. And I think that's what happens sometimes, but I think we're all aware. And I think passion is good and maybe awareness is good. I don't know, it just jumped out to me in this section.
I agree.
Whether or not people perceive that about us, I don't know.
Right.
Well, you know, I, I thought about, we had somebody that came and spoke with the board not too very long ago after the meeting, just mentioned how surprised they were, how cordial we were to each other, that we listened, and that there's this kind of expectation in the world right now that people don't agree. So if we don't agree, then we must, you know, just be horrible to each other. And, and this is not the way a good governing board works. And I, and so I think that we were putting out what we should work, how we should work together. And that was nice to get that feedback from somebody and saying, oh, I really recognize that and I appreciated that.
Yeah, the feedback's nice, because then you actually feel like, you want to feel that that's happening, but you don't know it till you hear it.
Right.
And, and as, you want to finish talking, right?
Yeah.
So you said, you know, it says, how am I perceived in my board role? Well, I'm pretty critical of myself, not so much of everyone else, but I'm very fidgety. I move around a lot and I'm off, I'm told, you know, often that I have this angry look about me. And I'm, I'm usually just thinking. And I have this other thing, I cross my arms a lot. I'm told that makes me look angry as well. I'm not angry. I'm just, sometimes it's relaxing, but it's not meant to mean anything else than that. But, and, but it's right. When you read it, it makes you think about body movements and people are seeing what you're doing, and that tells a lot. They might just stop listening and look at what you're doing and, you know, think, you know, ill of you or whatever. So, so it's, it's hard to constantly stay on guard and make yourself not look like you're angry.
You're saying, you're explaining exactly what Justin was trying to say. And we know that we all know this a lot. And we can all be off, you know, off the rails a little bit, but I think it's pretty clear we all, we look good for kids.
Oh, yeah.
That's one of the reasons I really want to challenge us to, and I think it's one of the conversations we're taking this book from, we have to be. I think we need to ask people how they perceive us. I think we spend a lot of time, we do a lot of surveys, we're analyzing this room, and we don't ever ask them to give us feedback. And I, I don't need to, because we don't need to assume that people say, we can ask them how they're doing, and we can, you know, respond to what they want to know.
Well, I kind of think this. I have a few other friends on other boards and hearing what they've been going through lately, and we don't have that here. I'm thinking people are comfortable with what we're doing. Because...
I got a lot of compliments when we were doing our online meetings. I had interactions with member families as we were going into creating the pods and the neighborhoods and stuff that were going on, all the meals and the Chromebooks, scan outs and everything, that they were complimentary of both administration was doing, but also on the board was handling. It was multiple people, it wasn't just, it was part of the space there. So I got a lot of that.
It's nice.
I'd be like to know what people are thinking also. I look forward to hearing that. That's all I had for questions tonight. I mean, if anybody has anything or comments, questions.
I'm good.
I just want to say, you know, that the Chinese listening sample on page 51, just kind of thinking about just different aspects of listening and how to, you know, actively do that. And so then I think that back with some stuff, I relied on people before where they're informed, focused, and engaged through mutual endeavor. And one of the things I realized really well about all of us is that we are all in different ways, informed, focused, and engaged about different things. And so every meeting, somebody brings, somebody wants a passion or a, it just brings new information or new focus or whatever. I don't necessarily have a lot of that. And so that, I think that's the case for all of us, and so mutual learning is something that I think about with us. And we can't, we can't listen to it sometimes.
Absolutely.
So we, for the next one, we're gonna finish up this part one. Chapter three touched it a lot on what we just talked about, but it's with the advice of the superintendent. So we kind of have some different ways of governance mindset. And then we finish up with this section, welcoming trustees, which is something I touched on a bit too. So I don't know, I feel like at some point, you should, you might talk about maybe even the next one. Am I remembering that right? Does that work for you?
It would.
And I'm happy to, unless somebody else wants to. Superintendent.
I'm good.
I agree.
Are we putting both of those chapters in 40 now?
We are, because I don't, I, I know we need to be a full conversation about some of the things that we're getting focusing on the superintendent instead of the other conversation. And trying to help the, 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 you know. And this month, we, so we are doing that at the next meeting. We are squished together a little bit because of that information. So in order to finish this book up before we start having the board deal with this Friday, we're gonna do it in the next one. So that'll be October, like, two weeks from now. Unless it's really hot and cold today.
That's right.
Guy hasn't told me yet. All right, thank you, friends. Moving on to the, we have a few more reports tonight, and I want to be that one to read is the scope person for all of them. So light point and free, the Student Services Committee Report. These are just for you, so if anyone has any questions about them or if you want to highlight our attention seat.
I'd say the top two are just updates. Then, you know, whenever we have a committee gathering, I like to give you a quick report and rundown, so nothing specific to highlight.
Five point before that, and then five point twenty, and what do you have to say about that one? And then 5.05 is the news dash, the webinar to report.
Yeah, so that was a multi-district event and just saw the, the performance of the schedule and different conversations. And again, overall ratings were extremely high and just proves we're, we're doing some things right. It's good to hear.
Maintaining mental wellness with a chaos mindset.
Yeah, and if I remembered the acronym for chaos, I, I would, I would spout it off, but I don't remember it. I would have to Google it, but I, it was really good. It's about mindfulness and just making sure that you have the right response to whatever the stimulus is. I sat in on that session because it was particularly relevant, and it was really good.
So was it just three other schools that joined in on this?
Let's see, Lindbergh, Bayless, us, Webster Groves.
Okay.
Valley Park?
No. Get smart.
This is Valley Park, right?
Valley Park, yes, sorry. Megan was not there, so I apologize.
I just love that we're doing this collaboratively. I think that's great.
Yeah, it's a requirement for all of us, and we should... Yeah, we, it's a requirement for all of us, and we share resources, we have expertise, different expertise in each of our districts, and that really does allow us to share the wealth, and it, uh, really cuts down on cost. Uh, because we have to bring in vendors or send people out, uh, to go, to complete the tasks. Thank you.
All right, and then to section six, please some comments. Um, you would be since comments regarding, and I, on the beginning of that, you know, please some comments. All right, so we're moving on to section seven, first one, Dr. McGevey back.
I don't know.
All right, so Dr. McGevey, seven point oh-one, did you have any updates that we did or...
No, no edits, no changes, uh, no, no news other than this one, so I feel like it's good to go.
Very good. The administration recommends a nice move that the board approves the curriculum as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Upstream, motion carry, six to zero?
Yeah, it's Jordan, he's up, he's up, yeah.
And then we also have a first read tonight. Anything you wanna start with?
Uh, just, uh, I had a small typo of calling it World History One instead of Honors World History. So if you refresh your screen, uh, you'll probably notice that I did that before stepping up to the mic, but, um...
Oh, really?
Mine says honors.
Okay, good. Perfect. All right, good. It was in the wording at the top that I forgot. It was my fault, but I fixed it. So that's good.
Yay.
That looks good.
Yep.
I wasn't sure how much it explained it in a short time. I read through everything you picked for that one semester, and it's based on my... I know I did it too long.
All right, um, I guess that's it.
That's it, thank you.
All right, we're going on to section eight, step one.
So eight dot oh-one, is the strategic plan up to?
Yeah, um, yep, yeah, the, the one item that I wanted to mention is just, um, I feel like we're, we've made good progress with getting our pillars firmed up. You guys have kind of seen that. And from some of that input, I feel like we've got a pretty good short-term direction, meaning that, you know, there were a lot of things that people felt like we're doing well, let's continue to do them. There were, you know, just a few things that got brought up that maybe this is something we should turn attention to. So I feel like we've got these pillars arranged that really kind of honor, um, you know, our students. What are we trying to do for students? What is it that we're doing for our staff? So all of the folks that work for us? What do we hope to do for families or the community at large? And then what, you know, what do we want to accomplish with the board? So as, as a governance team, what are, what are some of those things that we want to kind of take responsibility for improving? So I feel like we've got that, um, lined up so that we're addressing a lot of key things. And we've been actively working, um, on, you know, what would one-year plans look like? And so probably here in, uh, the next few days, I'll be able to kind of share a draft of that with the board. At, at some point, we'll share that broadly, um, with, you know, beyond the board. But one of the things that, uh, I feel like we, we haven't necessarily done is ask people to look, you know, five years down the road. What, what is it that students might like to see happening in, you know, after five years? What is it that staff want to see being achieved by twenty twenty-seven? Same way with our families and our community, and then likewise the board, what are some of those things? So that's really, I, I guess, kind of what I'm proposing is, is, uh, turning some attention to, to more of that long-term vision of things that really are probably impossible to do in a year. Um, I, I, and like I said, I don't think that our one-year plans will do a disservice to that. Um, I feel like the, the beauty of a one-year plan is it's one year. You don't have to commit to doing it for five years. And so I think we can be pretty flexible on what these one-year plans look like from year to year. And I think that next step is trying to figure out what is that twenty twenty-seven vision? That, that we can make sure that our one-year incremental improvement starts leading in that direction. And so, um, I don't want it to be too wordy, so I don't want it to be like tons and tons of pages on vision that I don't know that anybody could get any of that accomplished in five years. So I would like to capture people's thoughts and then come up with maybe three or four sentences that we feel like really embody a, a vision direction that, that can never be, that couldn't necessarily be accomplished in one year, but certainly over five years. So, um, certainly we could do that by asking people to participate in, you know, a survey or a thought exchange, but I would also like to organize, you know, some in-person gatherings. Um, so talking directly to students, talking with staff, um, talking with the board at some point, um, maybe at one of our upcoming meetings. And then also same way with getting families and community members in a space where they can, for, for really that visioning purpose. Um, and, and at some point, yes, we can kind of turn our attention to, to more of the, the one-year plan aspects, but I think that I'd like to, to get some work started on more of that, that five-year visioning. So anyway, that's what I'm kind of proposing as work that could happen, um, this month, maybe even into November, so that, you know, certainly we, we stay on track with, hopefully by the end of December, we'll have both, what are we doing short-term? So in the next year, what are we trying to accomplish? But then also what, what, what's the vision of where we want to go with each of those pillars? So with that, open for feedback, comments, thoughts about just starting to, to engage in that, that visioning work just around those pillars, um, kind of leaving the mission, vision, and core values as a set, a different item that, that you guys are, are, are kind of working on. This would just specifically be for those pillars and trying to get some things built around each pillar.
I feel like we are connecting to the community and the students, and they are probably, I just, I think that's good. Really, really good to get all that things, like, see, some of that diversity, perspective. Kind of, also, talking on the book, or together.
When I look at the staff, it's great. Would you, what is, staff, they love, they love this district? Or is it that they see...
The only thing I would add is that I think the student one is going to be a challenge to get meaningful input from, on my view of vision, from even, even high schoolers, right? I mean, I sort of like have, you know, seniors looking down the road, like here, but if you would have been or if you were, if you were starting out, I just, to phrase it in a way that I think is, is just somehow, well, I just don't know if the five years is gonna mean much, even if that's what we're trying to achieve. It's just, I don't know, I think about my own, I think about my own student and, uh, is it five years from our front a little? But, uh, but no, I'm, but, but on the flip side, I do think it, it's essential to ask them something and, and, and to connect them with all of the other groups also.
I wonder if there's a place in there for alumni?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think definitely there's a way to figure out, you know, certainly alumni, there's part of the community.
Right.
But then maybe, maybe there is a, um, a lens there, a student lens of folks that are, are gone. So, so they did graduate, but yet maybe they could add some context to, I wasn't, I was a student not so long ago. I, I still remember what it was like.
Last ten years or something that has that still connection, but they're, they're thinking further from. Just thinking about it. And...
Well, among that lines, the community members that are former board members, they have, they have a real perspective on the district.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I do like the idea, if we can do it, to have some gatherings with folks.
Yeah.
I just think there's so much value in, in having discussions and thinking about things together. So if we can do that in some way that, um, if there's, kind of like our last time together when we were going through, you know, kind of workshop, you think? We built together and thought together, and some of the things that you all said resonated, and I said, okay, I'm thinking about it a little differently. And then, you know, we kind of came up with something that made sense for certain...
Kind of just build energy and people work together versus in isolation, you could have another survey.
Yeah, or a thought exchange, like, I, I think they're great, but then you're like, oh, yes, yes, I like that one, I like that one. This is all of what I think versus what we are doing together.
You're talking about going to alumni, uh, especially some of the newer alumni. I think a question comes to my mind here just now is, did we help them be career-ready? Did we help them get to where they were thinking they wanted to go? Not to say they didn't change their mind or whatever, you know, but did we actually, were we successful as a district getting them there? Be interesting to know.
Okay, so, uh, that's kind of over the next month, um, certainly something that people can participate in remotely. So just to get what, what we can glean, um, and then also setting up some, some in-person opportunities that aren't too big. So, and, and having several opportunities, so if folks can't make it on one, one night, um, you know, we, uh, we'll make sure there's, there's a, a few possibilities for, for people to get engaged, um, and start working on that. And then certainly, uh, possibly at our next meeting, we could have some conversation around pillar four, um, you know, during, during this meeting, um, in some way, shape, or form, and that can kind of start that, you know, start that process of, of us talking about the vision of, uh, kind of the governance team around vision for pillar four.
In terms of our conversation about mission, vision, and core values, just for an update, so, um, we've, we've gotten all of us a couple of versions of the notes at this point, so all that needs to look back at, but like, three of us have not been able to, but having on the calendar to kind of get, or just look at everything we said and just come up with some ideas to put out to the group so that we have something a little more concrete to talk about rather than just another reiterating session. Um, but one thing that Dr. McGevey has talked about is, we have a current mission, vision, and values for the district. It's not, it's not like this plate clean every time we do a CSE. So we will not hold up things from moving forward. So as the conversations start with the community, um, we will continue, even if we have not said what people think about this new version of mission, vision, and values. But I think maybe, like, you have a better conversation about that, just in more limited scope than asking the board.
We don't have to feel pressed.
But, um, we are not able to reflect that, from moving, of course, ahead of what our...
Yep, yep, that's it, yeah.
Uh, so we're moving on to section nine, hotel items, and, um, this part is the latest.
So, a few things, uh, recommendations and recommendations for government recruitment, the A D C C, uh, part-time, so, whatever you've got. Some employment recommendations, Zinginger, um, the district, a couple for the district ones, a stipend for a medical. Employee transfers, um, for the district coming full-time to your assistant part-time, uh, headroom. If, if, if you have any comments or thoughts on this, anything you'd elaborate about, well, not...
I don't think so, just we, we're trying to be a little bit flexible with the H R A position, so we don't just completely lose the person they weren't able to keep up with the full-time. They, they did however say they would be able to continue helping us if we were, you know, if we were unmeanable to that. So instead of, I guess, just completely losing the person, we felt like it's, it's, it's good and it's necessary to, uh, to provide a little bit of flexibility there. So that's the only one that's just, that was precipitated why we're recommending that transfer is someone's going from full-time to part-time. But we think it would be helpful to keep them, uh, keep them on.
Oh, on that transfer, uh, does, do they have to stay in that part-time position for a certain length of time? Or if it comes available to them to go full-time, can they request that again?
Yeah, certainly we can, we could consider, um, you know, doing that for sure. And that's, that is one of the strategies there is to, you know, possibly the person will be able to, uh, to be in a position where they, they could, um, you know, be activated back to full-time. And so we have the ability to do that, and we bring that forward, you know, as, as an update, I guess, to the position.
All right, thanks.
Administration recommends a nice move, approval of the staffing changes as presented.
Second.
Thank you, President. All in favor, six five by seven nine?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes six zero, nine point zero-two staff level.
As you guys saw before, the report of the events that happened, uh, one of the other things we do every year is we get this program certified by area universities, uh, which allows it to qualify for the Beginning Teacher Assistance Program. That always has to be, uh, sponsored by an area university. So, um, in the Department of Overkill, we decided to, uh, get it certified by two universities. Um, and there's, there's some strategy behind why we do that. Uh, but really just honestly trying to allow people to have the opportunity to engage with different universities for, for, uh, postgraduate work. Uh, and this sets a path for them, uh, and gives them an opportunity. So, um, I put that together just to give you a report of what you see, exactly what I present to, uh, the universities for their certification. You see what we receive as sort of the special dispensation that this program is, uh, approved. Uh, and then I also, um, attached just a breakdown of what each event and what the topics are and who's going to be facilitating. And kind of the neat thing about that is, again, you see the buy-in from all the other districts, uh, as, as facilitating different, uh, parts of the program, uh, and we're all benefiting from it. So, uh, that's just a quick overview of that program, wanted you to see it.
Any comments on that, or, or information?
All right, section ten, some comments, especially meant to request a more, please some comments. All right, and that moves us right on to section eleven, our school improvement workshop. A little bit of a new format, does that help with your...
Yeah, so this will kind of be a little bit of a preview of, you know, some things that certainly will be in our strategic plan. So as you're looking at the pillars, um, the students, the staff, um, parents and community, and then as the school thinks about their system, systems they have in place that, you know, try to improve things, you'll kind of get a little preview of how we're thinking about that at the building level. And then a lot of those things are aligned to, you know, feed into what we continue to look at, you know, at the district level as well. So, so the format's a little bit updated, so certainly afterwards, be curious to, to hear what you think about it or, you know, what were some things that, uh, that we can, we can debrief about at some point. What hopefully will, will be familiar to some of you who've done this before is you'll rotate around to the buildings, spend about eight or nine minutes with each, uh, with each, uh, site there. And so certainly it's meant for the board members to interact with, uh, uh, building administration as they're kind of giving you that one page or that at-a-glance overview. And then that's what's posted, is kind of what we're calling at-a-glance or a, a plan on a page, if you will. And then certainly there's a, a little bit more, uh, detail behind this that, uh, you know, that is driving some more specific things. But, uh, but in trying to keep it as succinct as possible and just give you, you know, that, that overview, we, uh, we're gonna work off of those documents that you see there as, uh, as things that the buildings will talk about, so...
And they have them at the table, too, like, we...
I believe so. Yep, I think, I think they do. Yep, so yeah, you don't need, necessarily need to lug your computer with you if, if you don't want to.
Okay.
And so we've got five spaces and, you know, certainly it, it's, it's usually meant for board members to pair up or at, at least two board members with one another. And then I usually take the one lone board member and go with them, but it looks like you guys can pair up, so...
Steven, Steven.
I may, uh, fill, I may fill in the blanks and, and use this time to talk with, uh, some of our, the plans. But, but yeah, it looks like we'll be able to fill three of the five spaces and then continue to rotate. So I'll let you guys pair up, and then I'll keep time and we'll, we'll rotate. So I'll let you guys pair up and then I'll keep time and we'll, we'll rotate.
So.